Motion carries. Moving on to the approval of the August 18, 2022 before any regular minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica, further discussion. Hear none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, moving on to three, three with our school news.
School news for us?
Yeah. Saw a couple pieces here. We have Homecoming is going to be here before we know it. That is the week of September 26 through the game, which is on September 30th, and then the dance and the festivities on October 1st. So maybe those of you that are high schoolers or the flutter in your households, both dresses or not dresses, but maybe going with some friends, who knows? So that's always a great time. In the past, we've had a board float or something in a parade. So get your minds moving. Leah's not here this time to really get excited, so someone else has to get excited. Jim, this is sort of your first year with this, isn't it? Or no?
This is my first board float.
Oh. So sometimes the notary households can do the float. So just get that on your radar. Leave it at that. Congratulations to Jessica Erwin. Do you know why?
Yeah, I did. I had to think about it for a second.
So Jessica achieved level one in the WAASB member recognition program. The program recognizes board members for their efforts in leadership and board development through the member recognition program. So congratulations.
Thank you.
And last but not least that we have here, make sure I don't have anything else here. Yep. We have something new that we're starting this year, something actually that my team, Edel, team and I are moving forward with as a family English learner information, right? To really make sure our families within our program, because we do have a growing English learner population growing. We're up to 50-ish students. We were in the mid-over 30s last year. So we have a growing population and growing program of families we want to make sure are supportive. So we're going to be going through more logistics and procedures with families. For example, when you're on the website, you can change it and translate to any language. Really making sure the communication lines are open for our families and the resources are available. So we have that going this Thursday, actually here in the staff room. Thank you Paul for putting this user space. That's all we have for the... You got some people? School news?
We have several principals here.
We do.
Should I pick on some of them and ask them if they have any school news for us?
I'm sure they have a ton of school news.
School started.
Day three.
Yes, we did start. We did start.
They've been lost one yet either. Those little ones falling asleep in the bus. Yeah. They're tired.
Things that come to mind are like the PBIS kickoff. So we've been doing stations, teaching recess and lunch and school bus behavior. We're having our all-school assembly on Friday, our back-to-school kickoff.
Hers is also Friday. Nice. Very exciting.
And the high school and the middle school are just, you know, they're so excited to be there.
I mean, the only thing I would say is this is just the second year we've had sixth graders only on the first day.
Yeah.
And it is such a nice way to kick off the year with having just three times as many adult hands to help those kids just feel welcomed and also feel a little bit more comfortable. It's just, it's a really nice start for our sixth graders, and I think it is for some of their families too, especially if it's their first one coming in. So to be able to do that again was just a really nice way to start on Thursday. Yeah.
We have 35 new students in the high school newly enrolled to the district on top of a freshman class and having that freshman day along with even the night that we did earlier where we just let freshmen kind of wander the building with their families, their schedules has really lets ninth graders and some of the new students settle in. So that first day when everyone's back like last Friday and then even today felt just a little bit easier, just a smidge, right? And especially with our rainbow schedule that we do, it's always nice to give students that opportunity to kind of feel like they can walk through it. And so I do think that, you know, I always go back and forth like, oh, minutes and stuff, and then you see the day happen and you're like, okay.
Like this is why.
This is why we do it, because it's very helpful to give those families and those students the opportunity just to kind of be there on their own. And I'll tell you Lester, if it had been all four grades, it'd have been a very different experience in that building. So it was good. It was nice to have.
Yeah.
My eighth grader and 12th grader were very happy to allow them the opportunity.
There you go.
Speeded by themselves, so.
Yeah, good.
Good for you guys to make that happen. I wish the idea for sixth graders too. It's a tough transition here. All right. Board members, any school news?
All right.
I have one little interesting tidbit. It's more of a solicitation for help. I talked to Rob Farnsworth. He said there's 38 girls out for eighth grade volleyball this year, and only his wife is coaching. So if anyone knows anyone who wants to assist, please raise your hand, because it'd be great to have that, you know, that individual coaching for all those kids.
Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah, and it's great for the participation that high.
All right. Moving on to two weeks, this is kind of, we have this.
Yeah.
We will move on to four, so here's our personal transactions.
Motion to approve.
Just not on the agenda as well. And we have to...
Motion to approve of the addendum.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica, to approve of the addendum. Further discussion. Hear none, all those in favor could say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, moving to the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like to pull out?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jessica, further discussion. Hear none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to six, discussions. Committee member reports. We will start with Jim, he's been taking the building grounds, the transportation committee. Since I think you're probably in the...
I was the only one on the... We last met on 8/22, so August 22nd. And since then, as a board, we have heard from Dave Reed to give us an update. So really, there's nothing to report that we haven't heard as a board from Mr. Reed. So on the building side of that, on the transportation side, Brian told, gave an update, and it's not like anything we haven't heard. We're short on bus drivers, and that's going to continue to challenge. Like Adam's plea, if we can get the community to rally behind that, anyone that's willing and able, we'd love to have you as part of our transportation team. So whatever we can do there to help, that'd be great. Dave is down a few prestigios as well, so we'll do everything we can to make it all work out. And as always, Dave and Brian are doing a tremendous job leading those two different teams. So that's what I have for the transportation, for building the grounds, transportation. Any questions?
I can move right into finance.
I'll stick around. And this one's probably even easier. The last time we met as a finance committee was back in July 18th because of the annual audit. So everything from the finance committee side, we have heard at the annual meeting as well. So not a lot to report there. I know there are a few things going. We meet next Monday night, so I'll have a more in-depth report for next week.
Thank you. Leah is not here to give a safety loss committee update. So we'll move on to six, here are building events. We have some special guests here today on the third day of school. Thank you, because I'm sure you're all starting a little bit on the loose side with school just starting. So I'll let you...
I am. I'm excited. Yeah. So thank you for giving us some time to talk about where we're going and where we want to go in various pieces. We always want to start looking and talking about where we want to go and where we're going, but we can add our strategic plan, to the graphic, we price in many times and many presentations, but it is the foundation for where we are going. So again, we always try to look at our strategic plan that the Board of Education has created for us back in 2015. And within that, we have our three rocks, the equity rock, the professional rating rocks, and the lower grade rock. And then from there cascading, we have some more action items that we pull from. And you'll be seeing themes, not only our big three rocks, but also the four smaller rocks that were in the presentation today. One piece also that we always try to remember, we're so fortunate to be in our other school district with the structure that we have, the buildings and the principal team that we have. Our team really embraces, what Dr. Slaner tells us many, many times, that we're not a district of schools, we're a school district, and we really need to have that vertical alignment, because what we do at the lower grade levels affects what happens at the upper grade levels. So we keep that in mind as we talk about where we're going within our school district and we've been through so far. And to beat us off, we have Rachel Johnson, who's going to be talking about some of the cool things that have been happening at our lower elementary levels.
Is it okay if I sit, or do I need to go near something?
Um, you're welcome. It should catch, the microphone should catch.
Okay, I'm not going to go too far.
Okay.
Okay. So just a few highlights that we were kind of asked to talk about. And I think the biggest highlight in the area of literacy for our K-2 this last year was the use of a new resource called Hegarty. And so this is a resource that we are using in the kindergarten level. We really needed to go back and find ways to supplement the resources we're currently using to truly help students get that strong foundational skill of letter ID and letter sound, and just wanted to highlight, and the data's there for you. Literally, at the beginning of the year, we had 67% of kids that were about or above level. We ended at 98.7%, literally one student that was below level in a kind of an at-risk range. We were really able to bring that down and are already service and supporting that child already this year. And then the fact is, is that we've come that far and we continue to grow, and the conversations that happen in kindergarten, in our kindergarten team meetings around the use of this resource and the continuity, and then again, the way it's being, keeping kids engaged and bringing all students in engaging ways to help them grow is evident in the data. The other one was just our letter sound. So we just talked about letter ID. This is letter sounds, and this one was like even more exciting for us. The fact is, is that we rose by 71.5% from the beginning of the year for kids above, at or above level. We got to 96.8% from 25. So really, the immense growth we saw in our students, and again, if you look at the May-June, we have about two students that we're concerned about, one of them being, you know, and the fact is, we're going to continue to work and support those students in growing and getting the resources they need to grow as much as they can in the way they can most. So that was just something really exciting, and then we're continuing to do book studies and use other resources to, again, find ways to support our students in the area of reading. This is a quick, done and dirty about math. So this was our end-of-the-year summary. Thanks to Julie Jones, our math interventionist, we took a look at the math data at the end of the year. Couple of quick things just to highlight. We went from 13 students needing tier-two, tier-three services down to only six at the end of the year. We literally have 92% of our students meeting expectations. A strong of a healthy core is when 80% or more are achieving in the classroom, and we were at 92 at kindergarten. In math for grade one, we're at 80%. And again, we went from 25 students needing tier-two, tier-three down to seven. Again, just giving them this great resource and engaging hands-on materials that really helped kids increase their number sense and confidence in math was evident within our data. And then grade two, this is definitely, you know, we saw it in COVID. We saw where our students, and definitely the older they were in our elementary levels, the older they were, the kind of more impactful COVID was on their start. And so we're definitely still catching up, but the fact is, is that we went from 20 students needing tier-two, tier-three down to 16, and went up again, 7% of our students meeting expectations. So again, a lot of great things are happening and a lot of the goals that are revolving around this year for our teachers is really, again, finding, helping kids use, using the I can statements, engaging materials and opportunities to respond to really bring out even more of that growth and ownership in their own learning. And then the last thing I had, this last one, just wanted to pinpoint our work with what we call wellbeing in our building, and that's for our student behavior data. As Sarah alluded to, our big rocks, one of them is equity, and we really use that in dissecting the data to, again, better determine how we support all students, and we're constantly having discussions about what that looks like for our kids. But bottom line, if you look at pretty much 84 and 99%, so you've got 93% of our students pretty much doing exactly what you need them to do when they need to do it. 93%, that's absolutely amazing.
Could you remind me that acronym?
Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports.
B-I-R-S.
Oh, B-I-Rs. They're basically behavior referrals.
Okay.
So it's basically when a teacher documents if it's like a minor or a major behavior. Yeah. So any questions?
It's exciting to hear all the growth, because I know in just two years, kiddos coming in with those strong skills will be at the IC. Whoops. I shouldn't stand right in front of them. Pardon me. So we'll kick things off with self-regulation, and that really ties into your goal of student wellbeing. And last year, I wish we could say we did it because we were anticipating all of the needs coming out of COVID, but it was just a happy coincidence that we had some extra support in place for student regulation when it turns out students needed a lot of support there. And so our dean of students, who this is her third year in the district, she implemented or led a team that implemented sensory regulation space called the green space, where students would get the opportunity to take a movement break or a focusing break if they needed it. And this was new to us, and it was really a positive change. And to go along with it, before students were to leave the classroom to go to the green space, we also supported teachers in implementing a calming corner in all of the classrooms. And so to the right is a picture of just a kind of a cooldown spot where there's a timer, there's a strategy, there's some visuals, and it can be pretty simple, and it's available in all of our classrooms, so students always have that opportunity first. And really focusing on meeting their social and emotional needs, and you know, if you think about Maslow's hierarchy of needs, meeting those needs at the bottom so that they can focus on more of their academic skills. And it's just been really positive for students and for staff. In the area of math, just like Rachel's team was implementing bridges, we were as well. And with Sarah's coordination and leadership with CICU 2, that came with a lot of professional development that was really impactful. And a couple of the key things that the presenters focused on for us was we want to move from more of, away from a teacher-centered discussion to more of a student-centered discussion. Steven Mialovich always tells us, the person doing the talking is doing the learning. And so rather than the teacher taking on all of that cognitive load, we're trying to shift that over to our students to do more of the discussion and sharing of strategies. And then as teachers are planning, we also keep in mind the learning pyramid where you can see students retain a lot more of their information when they are engaged in active and differentiated work rather than more passive instruction. And so really getting back to strategies such as think, pair, share, showing work on the whiteboard, exit tickets, posters, math talk using manipulatives, so students are really active in their lessons. And it's all been a really positive shift. It was, bridges has been a lot of work, but it's been really worthwhile, and students and staff are all seeing the benefits. And then in your strategic plan, there was also a focus on co-teaching and inclusion. And last year was really a big shift for us. We turned the corner from most of our students receiving their special education services outside of the classroom in a pull-out model, to shifting to an inclusive strategy where our special education staff are pushing into the classrooms and students are able to get their specially-designed instruction within the classroom and with their peers. We went, we now have four out of five of our special education teachers using this model, and the vast majority of our students with IEPs participating. So we saw nice gains in students' literacy skills from being included and having access to the general education curriculum. We also paired that with a computer program called Lexia. It's an adaptive program that one of our reading specialists recommended and Sarah supported in bringing in. And what was really nice about that is it would assess students to see what foundational reading skills they were missing, and then it could target those. And it was like especially in our third grade level where, as Rachel was saying, you know, students, the pandemic really interrupted some of their foundational skills. It really targeted that and gave teachers some great tools to use to support that. And then to round things off, to support literacy, it's also getting back to those good reading habits and practicing reading fluency so that they can focus more of their thinking on the content of the reading rather than just how to figure out how to say words. So that is my summary. Any questions for me?
I did have one question. Having the kids do the discussion, and are those small groups typically, or is that...
Yeah.
I was just wondering how that works for really shy kids or kids that don't have a lot of confidence in their ability to do whatever it is.
Well, and the presenters spoke to that a little bit where rather than being called in front of a large group and asked to share my answer, it might be a lot safer for me to share it with Paul and test it out individually. Or if I'm not sure about my answer, Paul can explain his thinking to me. I can incorporate that and then share that. So we, there is some, there is quite a bit of like psychological safety there, but we always start with smaller groups first to have more engaged before sharing out in the larger group.
Great. There's different ways to share. Well, we've been working on, and Katie and Rachel talked about, the ability to use our whiteboards, kids can sort of work there while the teacher moves around, so if the teacher has that pulse, and who has it and who doesn't have it. And when they have a student who maybe is more shy but has the right answer, they can coach that student to share that, have that success shared. That was cool. Paul?
Hi. Well, thanks for giving me just a couple of minutes. At the middle school, some things we've been working on and continue to try to improve on, our professional learning communities, just making sure that we are crystal clear on what is essential for all students to learn, how we can find out if they are learning it, what we do if they aren't, and then how we extend their learning if they already have knowledge around something. So that's really been that focus, as well as collaboratively learning together as adults so we can improve our practice. Collective commitments is something we've spent a lot of time on, but those are, some things that we've all agreed are really important for us as a building in terms of what we value, to be best for students. And they give us something to go back to when we're making some decisions or we're thinking about what's the best thing for our students and for our building. And it really sort of keeps us all on the same page moving forward. So those have been really, really helpful. Had some great discussions with our new teachers who came in around those, particularly those five categories, and we have those then defined a little bit deeper. But it just really was able to show new people coming in what we value and what's important for us here at the middle school. So a good self-check for us. Student wellbeing, this is year six of Viking Hour, Looking the Way That It Does, which is focused mostly on building positive relationships, giving middle school students coping strategies to deal with the stress of middle school, helping them build good friendships with each other, and some study skills and those types of things as well. We've also implemented a second step, which is the social and emotional learning curriculum. This is, this I think will be the most robust year of that, because that's just a year and a half essentially in the making for us. And then also looking at some ways that we can assess that to find out what impact that's having on students in terms of their social and emotional learning. So that's been some exciting discussions here yet just this fall. And then another one is really thinking about grading practices a little bit and grading for learning. So we've talked about it as, we talk about it in terms of don't cross the streams, the behavior academics versus the what skills you've actually learned. And so not only do we look at academic grades from the standpoint of what are students learning, we have some work habit expectations which are more about turning things in on time or participating in class, being engaged, some of those types of things that may not drive your letter grade, but definitely are good habits to be developed. And then those are reported out to families eight times throughout the year in those four categories, exceeding, meeting, approaching, expectations, or needing improvement. So that's been a good separation for us here at the middle school as we teach our adolescents sort of the importance between the two different things. So those were the couple of things I was going to highlight here at the middle school. Any questions for me?
Work habits, do you notice that that is helpful, is a reward maybe for some kids who their grades aren't as good, but they're approaching things the right way? Have you noticed something like that?
I do think there's some of that. We've had some discussion for last spring and not as much yet this year about students doing some self-reporting of that too, so they can think a little bit about how they're doing in certain areas. And given that we do it for every single course, what I do think is interesting is students who work really hard in some areas see that recognition even if they struggle a little bit more academically. And the flip side to that is some students who don't really do necessarily what they always need to do, but seem to pull out some pretty good letter grades anyway, have some real feedback to them on how they could improve in school even if the letter grade isn't necessarily the focus. So yeah. Anything else?
Paul? Last year, I thought it was really fascinating what you and Cody both said. It wasn't necessarily the sixth graders or the freshmen that came in, but it was the seventh grader and sophomore class that missed their first year.
Yeah.
So now that class will be eighth graders through the pandemic. Not necessarily academically, just what we have learned within social behaviors, emotional. Are we eighth graders again? You know, are they?
Yeah, I think we are. Maybe like fourth quarter, seventh graders, I'll go down that. Yeah, no, we came a long way from last year when we had that discussion in the fall. You know, it's interesting, we didn't necessarily always notice that we really reaped the benefits of what our sixth grade team is able to do in terms of acclimating those students into the building. So it was a struggle when they came into seventh grade, through no fault of their own. But they have, they have come a really, really long way. Friday night is a perfect example of that. If you came down into the middle school section, there is a ton of energy down there. But I told them this morning on video announcements, just building-wide, that's by far the best and most engaged we've ever been during a football game, which is pretty cool to see. It's like, okay, we're middle schoolers again, you know, and we get to be that way. So yeah, that's been a good change. Doesn't hurt to win either. That was a good, that was a good one, but yeah. Anything else?
Can I just bring a perspective to that?
Sure.
I would say it can depend. I think some of those kids are still, they remember that year very fondly, and might still struggle with the, you know, because the bonus is when you've got kids that didn't have to do that, they're in school every year, the expectation is always the same, there's never a change, and then we took that one year, pulled them out, they're studying at home on their computer. Maybe they're paying attention, maybe they're not, it's really hard to know. So I think they're still... So I think there's still some kids that might have issues because of that year. I mean, mine was actually one of them. So that's just speaking from my perspective as a parent, it's still a struggle for some of these kids that are, that you take them out for a year and they sit at home and they really like that, some of them. Some of them didn't, some of them wanted to get back into school. I think it depends on the kid.
And I'll piggyback on that. I would agree in terms of behavior and acting as eighth graders. I think that is where we've seen a lot of growth and they are acting like eighth graders. I think we need to make sure that we help support them and find their love for learning again and their engagement in the fulfillment that comes from learning something new. Because I think that is part of what we saw as a real struggle is some apathy maybe a little bit and, and making some growth there with them. And we're in day two, so, but, but we'll get there. Yeah, no doubt.
The data is fun though, school. Like, it's fun. Learning is fun.
Yep, yep.
It's exciting and fun.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't have to do my job for the next eight years apparently because these guys all have it covered, so that's great. Yeah, I mean, I think similar things, right? Professional learning communities at the high school is something that we're really able to kind of refocus, really kind of focus back into. One of the things that we've done this year is we have two different leadership teams at the high school. And this is actually something Anthony Muhammad, who does a lot of PLC work, recommends in that where we've got two teams, one doing more logistical, one actually jumping into some really important like mission, vision, collective commitments, which you saw Paul talk about, which is really the basis of, you know, professional learning communities. You can't really be a PLC until you really have that foundational work. We don't have a mission, we don't have a vision, we don't have like some of these things at the high school. And so actually at our first staff meeting tomorrow, we're taking that first step to do some, do some kind of identity work as a building, which is really exciting to do. The guiding coalition as it's worked, it's about seven teachers and myself to kind of get together and work on some of that with the involvement of the rest of the staff becoming, really diving into some of that work. So we're excited about really taking that next step from going to PLC conferences, maybe doing some PLC work, kind of what we call PLC-like, jumping in and really kind of getting our, our hands dirty. So that's really exciting work this year and I'm, I'm really excited for it. The social emotional piece, students and staff, we've adopted a new SCL curriculum. It's kind of the, the high school version of second step. We have some teachers piloting it this year. We have 10 teachers across the four different grade levels piloting an SCL curriculum that's focused on high school students. So we're really excited to have something that's really research-based and more focused on high school students. Talisa's done a fantastic job thus far, but I think she's been like kind of creating these things on the go and she's, she's ready to have some structure, really have a team built around it. So we've actually had a team working on this for what, a year and a half, actually trying to find the best curriculum. Thanks to Brian Johnson, some hard work on getting some grant money, we're able to afford actually be able to get something that's really robust. And so they're very thoughtful in what to purchase. And then I think we've been our staff, the Leo program, right? Something that we had our staff kick off of on the first day and just be able to really focus on them a little bit, focus on the staff and their own wellbeing, not only because it's because of COVID, but the atmosphere and all the things going on around. It's really nice to really give staff that like, look, we, we see you, we want to support you because they really need that right now. And so the Leo program and doing things, even little stuff in our building, giving away kind of prizes throughout the day when it was like a staff work day and we were like bop on and Sarah, name this tune, call us fourth caller and just get the staff engaged and feeling, you know, enjoying being there again, which is really exciting. Last year we had Equity and Wellness Day that we'll continue to do this spring and really bring that back. We had a lot of really good feedback around that and just again focusing on equity and kind of putting the mission statement this group put together into action, right? Actually putting that rubber on the road and, and putting some things into action as opposed to just words. So those are some of the social emotional things we're doing to support students. Teacher clarity is really the instructional focus of this coming year. We talked a little bit about teacher clarity last year at the high school, but now we're kind of getting into the three questions that, like when you walk into a classroom, I would ask students like, what are you learning? Why are you learning it? And how are you know you've learned it? Those are the three kind of, you hope every student can answer those. And we're getting teachers that, we're working on a walkthrough tool. It's actually a district-wide thing, but we're excited to have teachers see each other. It's one of the things teachers gave us feedback on, so we want to get better, but I want to see teachers, there's so many good things happening in our building, but teachers are, they're busy teaching, right? And so how can we get them in to see each other teach and really kind of grab some of those pieces to focus and maybe even steal from their peers a little bit of, of all the great stuff that they're doing. We have the Student Success Summit again, that's what kind of came out of that, but really diving into the Clarity for Learning book. We're actually going to have a teacher clarity work group. We have our Wednesday committee groups that's purely focused on getting around, supporting and helping their peers with teacher clarity because we, we see this as kind of the low-hanging fruit and a very impactful piece of research that came from the Student Success Summit across the district. But as a building, as instruction, that's something we're really honing in on by having a committee working around it and really trying to connect that with our professional learning communities. So again, really the PLCs, the SCL work and the teacher clarity, these are the three big things every staff meeting will be doing professional learning on. We moved away from logistics and we're, will be supporting students through this work. So those are again, the three big things. And then yeah, we're, we're back at day two. So I think we're, to kind of Paul's point, and I know Jimmy had asked, I think we're, we're already seeing some students who understand high school a little bit there. They, they, they had an eighth grade year-ish, especially I think they ended like with a normal eighth grade year. And you're seeing that kind of freshman already kind of come in with some routines and habits, which is really nice to see. We're kind of crossing our fingers we would see it and I, I think it's been nice to see just for these couple of days, there's a routine, there's, kids get it. And I think that's been nice, the energy's been really positive. I think I had a lot of staff and kids, especially staff at the high school. This is the first year, probably six or seven years at the high school. There's no construction, there's no trailers, there's no COVID. I mean, there's COVID, but like it's such a different feeling and to have teachers actually back to feeling confident again, that has an impact on when they're learning, with their working with students. And even hear students saying like, it feels good just to be in school and do normal. And that's a very nice feeling so we can start to focus on some of this work again as opposed to COVID protocols and all the other stuff that we do. So. Any questions, Paul?
I have one quick question.
Sure.
The SCL curriculum, what class is it?
That goes through during advisory. Oh, what, what teachers are doing it?
No, just the advisory.
Yeah, it happens during advisory. So every, every advisor does a lesson, but we've kind of picked two, one to two different, because there's four different grade levels of this, of this. So a freshman's not getting the same advisory lesson as a 12th grader. I think that was a problem we were having. So we've got two different teachers per grade level piloting this program this first semester and then maybe second semester will roll more people in. It just helped to kind of iron out some of the details instead of just, we've had teachers going through a lot and so it's a lot of PD and a lot of taking a lot in. This is going to help, it can be a slow roll, just to make sure we do it right as opposed to throwing one more big thing at them. So about two teachers per grade. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, that's our conference room. So I guess that part is done. Thank you all for coming in and.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm looking to seeing good results and it's great. Welcome to come back anytime, let us know the good news. All right, moving on to succeed, summer school report. And so Eric McCormick is not able to try this, so Sarah's trying, he's going to be doing this for us.
Thank you. So you need a stand-up break, save your bag. Is that okay?
Thank you for asking.
Presentation, okay, okay. Well, I'm here to provide a recap from our 2022 summer school program. So today, I'm just going to give you a brief look, the past four years that we've had our new and improved, but our newer type of programming. And then look at where we've been with our schedule and community back there because we really need that from the mentors and families. And then what are our next steps and where we want to go in the future. So again, some learning objectives show hopefully by the end of the presentation that you can maybe share with someone else, how many years we've had summer school, how many sessions, how many enrichment classes. Looking at the present, maybe by the end of this time, you'll be able to share with someone a positive or a negative reflective experience where students have learned in summer school, or like some testimonials and then some action steps, that future piece. Maybe by the other point, at another time today, you'll share with someone what action steps you've taken, based on family, staff and mentor feedback. Okay, mystery portion. So here's our four years of summer school. Each year offer a unique opportunity. So summer of 2019, that's when we offered a program that included enrichment classes. Prior to 2019, it was more of a remediation type program where students were invited in in areas of math, reading, research support. Very small groups of clusters of students. Steve's vision was to open it up and help and have a larger summer school program that where we hired Eric McCormick as our summer school coordinator and we offered more classes to students. 2020, we had everything lined up to repeat the summer of 2019, but we had to pivot rather quickly where we moved to back to more of this community-based students based on their English or math needs. It was 100% virtual, we had to keep it smaller. It was hard to get staffing at that point to do more virtual learning with students online, but still it was a good experience based on family feedback. 2021, we were transitioning back to face-to-face, but it wasn't yet a full robust program. We did not offer enrichment classes at that point either. Again, just we were in that flux stage. But summer of 2022, we were back to offering the full, full-blown program with a few less middle school classes than we would have liked to have offered. We had to focus more at the elementary level due to staff interest in getting people involved. But we were still able about approximately to offer and actually have the same amount of students enrolled. In that first year, we had 369 students and this past year, 351. So there's a nice bounce back considering what we've been through the past couple of summers. So enrichment has returned this, this school year. So enrichment allows the creativity, the excitement, the connections. These classes are just so vital for student interest and staff interest in wanting to participate as well. I have a video here from U. Kent Ukulele's. This was a new class with Matthew Pernelli. He was a long-term substitute within our school district. And he filled in for Alyssa Judy at the middle school band level. So they came and, I don't know if they serenaded, I don't think they sang, but they played a little bit for our office down. Awesome. So just a little taste of summer school fun. And, and looking at the attendance, so as you may know, we had two sessions, session one, session, session two with a week-long break during the 4th of July. We, as families traveled, staff traveled. You can see how many students attended those sessions. There's a lot that attend both versus one or the other. So that's, that's pretty neat to see. In 2019, so looking back a couple of years in some of the data, well, asking families whether they felt their students benefited from attending summer school overwhelmingly. You can see here about 93% said yes. And looking at this year's data, pretty close, about 95% with a similar number of respondents. Looking at, you know, based on experiences they had this past summer, will they enroll their students next year? About 90% said that they, they would, which is neat to see. This is a slight drop from the first year. A large portion of our family respondents, the students who were in grades two through five, and that's where we did focus on programming more of those elementary levels because we didn't have as many offerings at the middle school level. Making sure that we can offer more middle school classes is going to still continue to be a priority, but we need to again, get enough staff to do that. So why has summer school been so successful? Well, it comes down to the people, the families, the staff and the high school mentors. We know that Alhore has great families. We're so fortunate to have the families that we have in our school district wanting to be involved in our program and our program's success is vital for that. Our staff have brought rejuvenated ideas to enrichment. We have many new courses offered, as you saw, U. Kent Ukulele was one of them. So that's been great and our high school mentors have really elevated the program. And you can see some of the comments from families, from staff, about staff and our school mentors as well. This year, we had about 65 high school students interested in being mentors, which is a big number, largest we've ever had. And 53 were able to participate in summer school and being mentored in some way. So whether they were helping in the office, whether they were helping in one of our enrichment classes or academic booster classes, it was really neat to see. About 97% really enjoyed the experience, which is really nice to see. 2029, that responded. Why did they want to become a student assistant or a mentor? You can see here, looking at silver cord, yeah, so a good amount, we're looking at that. But some of them are maybe interested in the field of education and looking with students. But some just wanted to volunteer their time too, which is neat to see. Eric got a really nice picture of all of our mentors. And as you can see here, some more information or more testimonials about why some of our mentors or experiences that they had in the program this year. So thinking about moving forward, where do we want to go? So the top four areas that families said they need to improve on, registration, class variety, communication and transportation. Forty, about 47% responded, said it was, was fine and they worked out well for them. So we can use this information and continue to find a channel process. Again, looking and thinking about moving forward, we think about families and staff and mentors. With families, maybe showing or creating some videos ahead of time to show families exactly where to go, how to move around the building for summer school, walk through the registration process more in videos. In our class catalog, we can maybe describe activities or these levels because for some students who have maybe more censoring ease, some classes may not be the right fit for them. Fun, fitness, those movement classes had higher ratings, so looking to probably have more of that variety for students as well. Looking at staff, again, building in those middle school options and targeting student creativity is a big piece of this. And lastly, the student mentors, making sure again that what our mentors are doing for our staff meet their expectations of staff. And Eric would also like to look at creating a mentor leader of the mentors to sort of rankle and coordinate and facilitate all of that, that would help him out. And he'd like more, I don't know how he could fit more mentors, which is what he does, I think 53 is over. But hey, bring it on, right? Bring it on, it's great, great leadership opportunity for kids. And that's it.
Questions for him? Summer's been successful?
Thank you to, well, we have two people up. Thank you to you guys for helping out during summer school as well. We always made sure we had administrative backup for Eric, just in case who knows happens.
Thanks to the middle school for hosting.
Middle school.
We'll take it back, we'll take it back next summer.
That's right.
Switch on and off.
Enrichment and focus is really exciting. Think I would have gotten my kids more involved in that when they were younger. They had, it's right, it really strikes me as two as an equity play. We didn't have the money to, for summer camps and things like that, sort of, a really nice activity.
Yeah, yeah, it was hard. We really wanted to make sure those schools evolved for that reason, because families have kids of all grade levels and making sure they're involved. So we'll continue to try and find ways to get more middle school opportunities for kids.
Also add the, probably, maybe I shouldn't, but I will. One of the nicest things about that is that for students who do need to come for some booster, also get some of the, the fun part of it too. So it's at least a little bit of a mix rather than just.
That'll punish me.
Well, yeah, just going to work on things that are challenging for them for whatever reason, or they need some more support, so. Yeah.
So you said you want to continue to improve communication prior to summer school sessions. Currently, right now, how do we communicate to families who this might be their first challenge or? Currently, right now, how do we communicate to families who this might be your first challenge?
Yeah.
Only, only from all that currently?
Yeah. Typically, December, January-ish, we have a save the date that we send out. For the past, we've done a physical card that goes home, we've done the e-blast that goes home, we put on our school website. So, we have that, we want to get that, those dates out early and often. And then, February, March-ish is when we start to, when we push the enrollment date, which is typically, depends on the year. But usually, it's March, we have to push it back some years. So, having those options available. We also tie it to the March parent-teacher conferences as well, making sure those flyers are there. Or invites, first round invites for those students who may need academic skills booster, getting the word out there. So, it's in person, it's through e-blast, and it's through paper form. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
I have a question. The registration, is it still the way it was when we first started? Where kids who are referred for summer school or some sort of assistance?
Yes.
Get first?
First round, second round.
Of the, 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 the classes too?
Yeah, that's where the parent-teacher conference is coming. We try to be strategic with that timing where the teacher can have that conversation and explain why this would be a good opportunity. And we do open registration a ten or earlier for those families to get in, and then we'll be up for all. And there's still, we still had a couple of students open even when we started the program. So, we did make sure whether it was a first round or second round, that students could get in.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Or members additional questions, have a session?
All right. We will move on to six D. You report on WSB's 2022 Summer Leadership and Leadership Governing for Success.
Yes.
It's a title.
Paul Breach, Chris?
Yeah. Yes, please. So, another PowerPoint presentation for you. So, this, this was a positive lining opportunity at the beginning of July in La Crosse. It was a day and a half, all day Friday, and then Saturday afternoon that I went to. And so, here, just kind of try to pick out some of the core information from the main, from the presentations. So, go ahead on. So, first one, the first, the keynote really focused on the idea of having an outward mindset. And this, this, these materials came from a, it comes from the Arbiter Institute, which is a leadership coaching organization. And the idea here being that, you can see what was on there. But basically, if we want to change results, that in a group dynamic, we often, it's better to change your focus on how you think to, rather than, to focus on what other people's needs are, what other people's perspectives are. And so, you can kind of see here that in approaching things this way, that if you're doing these things like, building relationships, listening to learning, communicating, if you're kind of building that foundation to help things go right, rather than spending your time dealing with things that are going wrong. So, that I think is. So, the next, the next one was more on a governance mindset. And this was focused on how to, the overall idea being here, how to think about board work, that school board work specifically, in terms of these, these four components that as you're approaching your board work, to bring systems thinking to that work. Meaning, making sure that the board is focusing on students, watching the budget, focusing on long-term goals, really being purposeful leaders and understanding how systems in the school district work. Keeping constituents informed, all those, those process types of things. The other component being making sure that everybody's keeping a strategic focus. Making sure that you're setting strategic goals for the school district, that we're setting board goals. How can we be more effective in hold ourselves accountable and responsive, responsible for what we are doing? Getting feedback and input from stakeholders, those kinds of things. Deep learning, meaning making sure that you're engaged in the work that you're doing, using data to make decisions, having open and authentic discussion and dialogue, and, you know, doing your homework, being prepared, and really understanding the work that's, the work that you're doing. And the manner being just basic ability. How do you model appropriate behavior for the district, for staff, for students? Pretty intuitive kinds of things. And then the rest, then from there, it shifted from looking at that to really talking about building trustful organizations and building a trustful culture. And they talked about three different types of trust. Contractual trust being more acting with integrity, right, being true to your word, making promises you can keep, being an active part of the team, those sorts of things. Competence being working on doing the battle at what you do. Respecting people's knowledge, skills, ability, involving others and seeking their input. And then communication, making sure that you're sharing information, admitting mistakes, maintaining confidentiality, those, those kinds of things. So, there was a study, they talked about a longitudinal study in Chicago Public Schools. There's some resources at the end that you can read more. Where these organizations, these schools have worked very purposely in building trustful organizations and measured them over time and found that it led to a direct improvement in student outcomes and results. And the reason being that building this trustful culture reduced the sense of risk associated with change. So, staff and educators and the board felt more empowered to innovate, to take risks, to do things, to improve student learning. And then these other slides here are more structures for, an explanation on the left for what kinds of, what are some of the characteristics of a high-trust organization? And then on the right, more of a communication tool that organizations are really focused on this can use to, let's say there's a disagreement between two people or two sets of people. And maybe you make assumptions about where each person's coming from. And this can kind of help you step back and say, okay, here's how I got to the conclusion that I reached. And you can walk through that with the other person and just deeper, have a deeper understanding of what you, how each person arrived at their decision. So, that was most of the first day. And then the second day really focused on equity and excellence. And they spent a lot of time at the beginning talking about how they're both important. And if you want to go ahead on to the next slide. Equity being, you know, obviously, meaning the needs of all students. And excellence, and how a focus on both excellence and equity is, there's the interplay between them, right? You can't have one without the other. And then, part of that then was talking about high achieving districts who make this part of their, make this part of what they do. And then the next slide, I found that this slide here was interesting to me because I've seen, like, this was just in the other presentation too. I've seen this before a whole bunch of times. I hadn't actually seen this other one here before where the idea being that the, you know, the really, the right thing to do in terms of equity is figuring out how to remove the barrier to begin with. I thought that was interesting. And then, the last couple of slides here, kind of walk through. And as we go through these, these are a lot of things that I've seen us talk about and a lot of things that I've seen us doing. But just to bring here and compile them, they talked a lot about, went very specifically, what are some of the practices for fostering equity in school districts? So, improving instructional strategies and classroom practices. With some examples there of what that means. Improving discipline policies and practices. Improving grading policies and practices. And then, on the next slide there, ensuring access to advanced course options. Spent a bit of time talking about how you, you know, applying standardized, universal screenings to make sure that we're not missing any kids who should be in those classes. Refining family engagement and outreach practices to make sure that families are included. I think the Spanish learner, the English learners was a great example of that. And then making sure that we're reviewing other policies, district policies and practices on a regular basis. And then finally, they spent a lot of time just really hammering home that if they're focused on all kids and the focus on equity and not us, they're complementary to each other. And then, resources here, if you want to learn more or read more, these are kind of the core books and resources and materials that the information came from, the presentations pulled together. And then, this, I just threw in here because I had never heard of Maytholies before. But I was there and they hatched in quantities that you could see them on the radar. So, they are, they were gone by the time I took that picture. It was just a really cool little hotel on the, on the river. But, the Saturday, the Friday morning, I woke up and the whole ground was covered, covered in them. Literally, literally, like street sweepers out. So.
Should under your tire machine?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, it was like one day, they blanketed the ground and then they were gone. And then, upcoming last event is up here.
Questions for him?
Thank you. Can you even, I was going to point out, you pointed out like a lot of things, especially your last couple of slides about practices, are exactly what we heard from our principals or within our education community, with our instructional cultures, like. It was, it was a nice closure to all these presentations.
I know, it was, it struck me, it struck me as I was there listening that, that, you know, there were probably 70 or any other people, other board members, a couple of superintendents from all over the state. And it was interesting to get to talk to people who were kind of at different stages of, different stages and different perspectives on some of these. And it was very cool, especially in that part of, well, we'll be able to say, I hope we do this, all right, we're working on this. So, I'm excited for this.
Thanks for going and taking the time.
Yeah.
Coming back to the board.
All right, we'll move on to six E, long-range facility planning, referendum planning update.
Good evening, board members. It's nice to see you tonight. I apologize for not being there in person with you this evening. Just thought it would be helpful to provide a couple of updates to you around both our operational efforts as well as our brick and mortar capital needs. Sarah is about to put something up on the screen for you. Let's talk operational first. What you see here is a list of dates in which we're going to be going out and visiting several of our municipalities and townships to visit with our community members to talk about the referendum, address their questions, and explain the why behind the need. And I welcome any and all board members who might be available to join us. Certainly, please know we'd love to have you be a part of any part of these presentations. In addition, I'm also reaching out to a number of community groups to see if maybe we couldn't get on their agendas as well to express the need behind some of the work that you've been seeing in the newspapers here over the course of the past several weeks. As it relates to the operational side of the house, excuse me, as it relates to the capital side of the house, you saw no doubt in your board packet, our community and legislative engagement meeting minutes in which the long-range facility plan took center stage as the facility steering committee met with KAL for the purposes of beginning to think about what are our brick and mortar needs coming into the next five to 10 years. We have, I already had one meeting and we intend to have a second meeting, and that's scheduled to take place next week. And we are planning on taking a tour of the Early Learning Center. That's our kindergarten building next week with our host, Rachel Johnson, as well as take a look at our 2016 long-range facility plans. And then finally, begin to meet about three or four more times this fall before bringing something to the board in terms of some recommendations. These might be some loose recommendations born out of the referendum survey results that we received here this past spring. But the work is beginning in earnest, and certainly, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks for joining us virtually tonight. We appreciate you being here. One of the things that Steve and I discussed at one point was the possibility of a joint letter from the, from the Board of Education. And I can't remember, Steve, I apologize, it's been several days since we talked about this. But was that for the newspaper or was it to send out via email? And maybe it was both, but I'm just.
Yeah, I think we had talked about maybe something for the newspaper, but I really like your thinking. Why not also share that, maximize it by sending out by email, could please?
So, I wanted to get everybody's thoughts about an idea like that for the board. Anything's great, I mean. So, we have some authors. That might start a draft. I was wondering if anybody would volunteer perhaps that we can maybe look at the next time around. So, I'm certainly open to taking volunteers. I could certainly try myself, but I know that others write more eloquently than I do. And I tend to be very brief. And I'm really able to point type writers, so. Any volunteers?
I'd be happy to work on it if someone would like to join me.
I'd be glad to take you on that.
Okay. Is everybody okay with that idea or?
That's really great of you, thank you.
So, you're ready for the next meeting until week?
Yeah, so this will be focused on the operational referendum. I think once we get to the point, if we end up doing some sort of facility, that's obviously down the road. I would think personally, maybe that's a bad idea. I don't know, what does everybody think about writing something in there about facilities or, I don't know, is that too much? If let's, if there's.
Probably the last thing I want to ask about this letter. But I, but from the standpoint of positioning the operational referendum and the capital referendum, I take it one step at a time.
Okay, fair enough. Fair enough. Okay.
What timing will we envision on release of this? And I'm just thinking ahead, I see somebody's town hall listed, is that something that we can send out in advance? Try to notify people and let them show at that, or is it closer to the election day?
I would, they will be feeling me every two weeks. So, the next time we meet, we'll look at a draft. I would hope that we can kind of get that button up at that meeting. I see Steve nodding as well. So, yeah, that was kind of my thought because we don't have a ton of time really before this all gets.
I believe early voting begins like September 17th or 19th or something, so it's pretty clear, it's near.
Yeah. Okay. Great. Thanks for volunteering. Where, is there any thoughts or plans or ideas for like a community night? For information, an informational session, just an open, or was that fair?
He has them, I mean, he has them for.
Yeah.
Because of towns.
Yeah. They're on the boards. They came from one of the boards.
And this is similar to what we did at the last capital referendum. That we did, not at Beach, at Beach Village.
To Curly's point, I haven't layered in any dates yet. We're hosting something at this, at the district level and we're happy to do that. Likely maybe around the Saturday morning or something we were thinking.
I wonder if there's also value in doing it, something via Zoom? Simply because, not that people can't be together, but because it's far easier to drink my coffee at home and on a Saturday morning and listen to the Zoom than actually get dressed and go to the middle school. You know what I mean? Like there just might be people that are, or you know, if it's on a Thursday afternoon, you can listen to it before you leave for work or, you know, just might make it so that more people can hear the message.
Yeah, that's a good thought.
We'll also have some videos that are being produced as well that might help those families who'd be interested too. Thank you for thinking like that.
Curly, anything else you want to start?
Moving on to our sole action item. This is a first reading of the board policy 150, board governance roles and responsibilities. I'll let Jessica lead us through this and she is the advisor.
So a little history. We talked last April at our board workshop about whether or not we needed to have an additional policy drafted or created around people being liaisons with community groups. For those of you who remember that, we did, we did not come to sort of any sort of agreement. We decided that the finance committee would talk about it. So finance committee, we did talk about it. We decided that there was not a need for any separate policy, but that we could consider strengthening the current policy language that we have. And I volunteered to look at other districts to see if there was anything that we wanted to add or revise the current policy that we have. A lot of the language here comes from the Milton Cross Plains School Board, but it seems like it's pretty standard language that a lot of school boards have. So that first paragraph, the additions there and the letters came through end to end. Those all relate strictly to like making it really explicitly clear that, you know, it's only when we're all together that we can speak as a board, we can be any one person out on their own. The few other items that I'm suggesting, I noticed when I was reviewing other policies that some districts have more language around meeting norms. And this stood out to me solely because when I was at the regional dinner last fall and we had some sort of exercise reflecting on COVID and how like, how did your boards as a group succeed or fail? And one of the boards, I don't remember what community they were from, talked about how they had really well established meeting norms and how that really kept them grounded and focused on like moving forward. And I, so anyways, we can accept them or not accept them, but that was my reasoning for putting them there. I just thought that it could be useful, you know, something to refer back to and to remind ourselves. One word. One word here and how we want to engage with each other. So that's, that's my, my reminder of the history of this and why I'm proposing these additions. So I don't know what you all think. Brad, you, is that, is that, does that, my memory remembers it?
When I looked at it for the first time over the weekend.
Like why?
And now I remember. Now I remember.
I figured, I, yes.
Thank you.
When Dr. Slade said, how about, you know, how about we put this in? And I was like, yes, but I'm going to have to remind everyone why we're having this conversation.
I remember. So I, you know, I, I will reiterate my, I'll reiterate the concerns that I expressed at our board workshop in April. I will also ask that we strike letter H. Letter H, I think is the, is the, represents the concept that regardless of what vote is taken, that all seven of us march up the hill. And I think that is antithetical to democracy and the way that we treat minority voting, either singular voting folks or minority voting blocks. This is not, this is not the way they're treated and this is not the way they should be treated. So and you know, I, I was, I thought really, really hard about this over the weekend because this is, this is a concept that I have, that is, that has sort of stuck in my cross since I went to the, my first Wasbe meeting. But I, I really got to thinking about it and, and it became even clearer to me that this is a really, this is a really, really bad thing. And that's not to say that we, that we, that we can't, but to have, to have it written into policy that essentially what it says is, hey, listen, we don't care. We don't care that you took a principal vote in opposition to something. The minute you take that vote, and by the way, the minute you lose is, is, is the second that you, that you're, you're expected to, to fall in line with, with the rest of us. That's not the way a democracy works.
Is there a way that it could be reworded as, because I'm not a huge fan of the way it's worded, take responsibility? I'm thinking more like accept the outcome. Accepting isn't taking responsibility or advocating for it. You're just accepting that that's the outcome, that was the vote, that was the decision taken by the board as opposed to, you know.
Well, right, I think that's actually another cornerstone of a democracy that, that we, that someone in the minority would accept the outcome, right? Or at least acknowledge the outcome. But, but, but the principle of democracy is to, to respect, to respect well reasoned, you know, principled votes in the minority.
I'll second Rod's belief on that. And I, and I see where maybe the intent of this perhaps what you're getting at is that avoiding relitigating folks and decisions. But, but I don't like that idea of quashing dissent or performative action by the board. You know, as a sign of unity on a decision. I mean, I can think of some made by past boards that I'd probably disagree with. And I think that that would be good to revisit down the line as you're making, you know, further decisions that maybe layer on top of what has occurred previously. If you're supposed to pretend that that, that everything's hunky dory, I don't know how you go back and you add on or you move forward as a district. If you were just accepting that what happened was perfect. I'm not, it's elegant to try to, but I don't really understand how I'm getting at where.
My whole idea around the accept the outcome is like, we're not going to re-vote on every single thing because somebody didn't agree, you know what I mean? Like you're there, you're at the meeting or you're not, and the vote is the vote and the vote's done. And it's not going to be brought up over and over again to try and change the vote. That's just not how it works. But I, so that's where I come from. Like you accept the outcome, you accept that the action was taken, it's done. And how do we deal with that second part? Jessica, did you agree to that?
This, H is not one that I added, this was previously there. But I agree that, you know, if we as a board take a vote and I don't agree with that vote and I was in a minority, I shouldn't have been asked to advocate for it. But yet that doesn't mean that I'm gonna, I'm gonna acknowledge that we made this vote and that's what's happening and I'll move forward with it, but I don't, yeah. So we can look for other examples. Unless someone has other suggestions, Rob?
This is a first reading and we don't have everybody here because we're really good at this yet.
No matter what. Yeah. Do you think this one's trying, I mean, I think I read that one and I, I don't know, maybe it is the wording of it. I don't quite, I think I know what it's trying to say. I think it's trying to get to the idea that like one word, one voice. And that's kind of what I was thinking too, but it's not. Know what that like means in practice, right? Like I don't know what this is trying to say in practice.
What, what it means in practice is that someone who has voted in a minority either speaks now with the majority, which is, or doesn't, doesn't, doesn't speak at all. And I, I mean, not speaking at all is actually the outcome that I'd be more worried about than, actually the first is an impossibility, but the, but the second is the one that I'd be most, most concerned about. I mean, I think this is one of the, this is one of the problems with trying to codify, you know, sort of a vague tradition. And, and because that's where I think we, I think this is sort of a vague, you know, point on a slide at Wasbe, at our beginners Wasbe meeting. And that's, you know, sort of, that's where it sort of comes from and, and it's sort of vague and we never really have to deal with it. But when we codify it into a policy, that, you could, I'm not going to argue this, but my inner self did over the weekend, it becomes coercive. If it's a policy, then it becomes coercive. If it's a vague tradition, it's like, well, you know, you know, it's a vague tradition. But if you codify, if you actually say, a, a person who has voted in the minority must now join the majority by policy, you're coercing that person. That's not right. That makes it even more wronger. That's wrong, but.
Jessica, in your review of all of the neighboring or many districts, I'm sure, did you see anything that kind of gets to this idea?
I know. That wasn't something, well, yes, well, I did this in the spring. And two, that wasn't something I was focused on.
Can you just look and see if there's anything that might, I think definitely want to accept the outcome of each board action is something I think could be, I just, the whole take responsibility type, I just, that I don't even remember.
That's the weird language, right? Like I don't know what that means.
I would, I would, I would say that acknowledge is a better word than accept.
Okay.
And I know strike all the other stuff.
I was just going to say, can you move the second part?
Pardon me?
I was going to say, can you, do you bring a little after that?
Yeah, I, you don't need, you don't need any of it. I mean, it's a single sentence that says that, that board members are, that board members will, will, will acknowledge the, will acknowledge the action of the whole.
Hey, Philip, if you wouldn't mind, Jessica, just take a, take a look. I just, I mean, I don't even understand the point of it. Just that.
Yep, I can do that.
In today's America, that might not be the worst thing to have spelled out.
What's that?
Said in today's America, that might not be the worst thing to have spelled out.
What's that?
Because knowledge of the outcome.
Oh.
Okay, other parts or pieces?
Parts is words.
On, on K, and I don't know if I'm just getting myself turned around on words. I'm wondering if as an individual, is needed in that phrase? Because it said to act on behalf of the board, only in court and with other members, referring to speaking or acting for the board. Because I think that like you're either speaking on behalf of the board or you're speaking as an individual and in my mind.
Well, I'm saying that, and we have to vote in that sentence. But then the second part is acting for the board as an individual unless otherwise specified, you know? Because what this started with was, we're going to say, yes, J and B, the liaison with a community fundraising group, you know? So like that's, that's why that part is there.
Sarah, quick little typo on, that would be, that would be.
Any thoughts or corrections? We'll see this back here again since there's none of people to vote on it as a treaty, so.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to eight, those. Nine is future agenda items. As I say, every two weeks, if you have any agenda items to like to edit, please let me or J and B know. But don't let that hinder you from, you know, like, uh, you know. Ten is our schedule of next meetings. If there's anything I need to pull out of that, any questions, feel free to contact. And eleven, closed session, translated, closed section, closed session. And I'm told I don't have to read all this.
Can I back up to the, the committee meetings real quick? I'm sorry.
Oh.
The speed is yours.
Sure.
Just to point out that the, if anyone is interested, our safety and wellness committee meeting on September 19th is actually meeting in the new transition space. So if anyone wants to join us, they can see that. Sorry.
Thank you. No, that's good.
Just what is that?
It's the old PlayStation.
But I mean, would it, yeah, I did see that, but what is, what is the transition?
It's for those students who are over 18, but, but not yet 21, so, yeah. Or for like students who have been like expelled but still need support. They can go there and not be on campus.
Okay. Is it always called transition? All right, thank you. So closed session, after closed session for the statutes that are to be reviewed for consideration. Action, third initiation, negotiations, not part of education association for 2022, 2023, select for a new agreement. Sylvia will call over. Jessica?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And then also, yes, we'll take a couple of minutes and come back.